Yes.
All right then. Good evening and welcome to the August 18th to 2020 meeting of the City of Vista Planning Commission. This meeting is being conducted utilizing teleconferencing and electronic means consistent with the State of California Executive Order N 2920. The public may only view the meeting online and not in the council chambers. The meeting is being livestreamed at Planning Commission livestream To provide public comment during the meeting, join Zoom via the desktop via desktop computer or cellphone app or telephone. Members of the public will not be shown on the video and they will be able to watch and listen to and to speak when called upon. If you would like to speak on an item, use the raised hand option on the computer or press nine on your telephone when instructed to do so. All comments are subject to the same rules and regulations that would govern speaking comments at our regular meeting. This agenda and related staff reports and any correspondence received as agenda are available at the city's website, cityofvista.com. The city's also been informed that there is a possibility of a rolling blackout tonight. If our power is interrupted in the middle of the meeting, the items not decided on will be continued to our next meeting. So having said that, we will move on to roll call. Mr. Conley, would you call the roll, please?
All right, absolutely, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Rossler.
Here.
Vice Chairman Kramer.
Here.
Commissioner Hastings.
Here.
Commissioner Grimm.
Here.
Commissioner Looney.
Yes.
Commissioner Garretson.
Here.
And Commissioner Aguilera.
Here.
All right, all seven are present.
Good. Commissioners, the next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes of our August 4th meeting. If there are no changes to the minutes, can we hear a motion to approve? Commissioner Kramer.
I, seeing that there are no changes, I move that we accept the minutes from the August 18th meeting. Oops, August 4th meeting as submitted.
Very good. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Garretson, I second that.
Very good. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of our August 4th meeting. Mr. Conley, would you call the roll, please?
Chairman Rossler.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Kramer.
Yes.
Commissioner Hastings.
Yes.
Commissioner Grimm.
Yes.
Commissioner Looney.
Abstain.
Commissioner Garretson.
Yes.
Commissioner Aguilera.
Yes.
That would be six i's, zero no's, and one extension.
Wasn't Commissioner Aguilera absent last meeting?
Commissioner Aguilera.
I was. I've reviewed the minutes, though.
So if you aren't present at the prior meeting, I agree that it would be more appropriate to abstain from a voting on the minutes because the minutes are summarizing the meeting as a whole, which you weren't present at.
I disagree, but if that makes it easier for you guys, I can abstain.
All right, very good. So the minutes passed on a five to two vote with Commissioner Looney and Commissioner Aguilera abstaining. Mr. Conley, are there any changes to our agenda tonight?
No changes this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is oral communications. This is timed, the commission sets aside for items that are not on the agenda. I don't believe we have any requests to speak under oral communications.
Mr. Chairman, we have one hand raised by a member of the public, so I will provide an opportunity right now for Mr. Kaiser if he has comments that are not on the agenda.
I do.
All right, Mr. Kaiser.
Good evening, good evening all. Just, this new format is interesting and has Benny's in the sense that we don't have to run down to City Hall to participate and listen. But the, I would like to offer a couple of comments of feedback regarding the format that you read off, Mr. Chairman, and it's in the, in the document. First off, when the member of the public is unable to participate in the video, I'm not sure the value of excluding that. I mean, as we all know, it's better to speak to somebody in person. You can see my hands move and raise and my facial expressions and everything like that. And when you don't allow the public to be involved in the video, then you lose all that, that content in the communication. It's similar to say, well, we could have this, this meeting via email. Let's just everybody type stuff back and forth or via text messages. We don't do that. We add audio and we improve even further by adding video. So just by two cents on the format. Thank you.
Very good. We'll move on then to our continued public hearing. Anthem Church, Ms. Chow, are you ready with your staff report?
Certainly. John, do you have my presentation?
Yeah, hang on one second here. Wait. Sorry, this is my... All right. Sorry about that, Patsy.
That's okay, no worries. Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Rossler, Planning Commissioners. I'm Patty Chow. I'm the Deputy Director, Community Development, City Planner. I'm here this evening to present to you a continued item from last meeting, August 4th. And tonight's is the PH1 identified as P 20-0076. It's the Anthem Church Special Use Permit. Next slide, please.
Sorry.
So the special use permit is for church use that's consisting of an assembly area. There's offices, classrooms, storage area, and an existing commercial center at 760 Sycamore Avenue. So as indicated on the first slide here, the church will occupy about 22,000 square feet of the 52,000 square feet commercial building. And a total of 68 parking spaces is required for this use. That's based on the calculation of .33 parking spaces required per fixed seating. The church is proposing a total of 240 seats, so times .33 equals 68 parking spaces required. And right now, within the subject parcel, there is total of 185 parking spaces. So their, their meaning, obviously, the amount, there's well, you know, a great amount of parking space in order to meet the particular use, as indicated. There are tenant improvements that would come along with the project. There's no exterior improvements associated with this particular use or project. And there will also be signage to accommodate the wall signs on the exterior of the building. The average attendance is about 90 to 110 people at the Sunday church services. They have a couple of services, one at 9:15 and one at 11:00 a.m. And the congregation's about 300 people and about one-third of that is comprised of children. Next slide, please. So as indicated on this slide, the zone is C2, which is existing, an existing commercial center, as you all know. The land use designation is GC, which is Commercial General, surrounded by other residential uses kind of to the northwest. There are single-family homes there. And across the street on Sycamore, there's an existing mobile home park that's in the county of San Diego. Next slide. So this is just an aerial photo of the subject site where the, in red there is identified where the church would occupy a space in that building. As you can see, it's kind of on both sides of it. There's inline retail, a commercial center with the parking, you know, in the middle as it's shared amongst all the different tenants in that, in that particular center. Next slide. So the site plan indicates, again, just as in the previous aerial photos, this unhatched area is where the church would be occupying the existing building. The applicant also identified the parking spaces that were utilized by the congregation members as well as by the, the church staff, which is about 39 spaces that are located at the back of the building for the church staff when they are actually pre, in preparation for the services on Sunday. And then on the front where you have the diagonal parking, that's where the, the members would be parking there. So accommodate both congregation as well as the staff. Next slide, please. So this is a floor plan showing the assembly area, the sanctuary, which you see the 54 seats, 96 and 54 seats for a total of 240 seats. There's the entry area, then there's classrooms, office. There's a nursery, a family room, restroom area, et cetera. And there's also a storage area at the back of the building, which is about 5,000 square feet to remain as storage at this time. If there is a change in that area to accommodate more related church uses in there, the applicant will have to come back through a special use permit amendment in order for that to be considered. Next slide. Existing elevations, the proposed signs, which is not part of this request for the special use permit, that will be under a separate sign permit that they would have to actually apply for. And pretty much these existing exterior improvements that, again, will not be modified as part of this proposal. Next slide. Just more elevations of the existing building as it is today. Next slide. For purposes environmental review, the project actually is considered to be categorically exempt as far as preparation and environmental document according to CEQA because the project would result in only minor alterations to an existing private structure. Next slide. In terms of public policy consideration, general plan and our code, the requested special use permit would not adversely affect the general plan because there are no specific goals or objectives regarding the proposed use. The site is currently Zone C2, as indicated before, and that would require the approval of a special use permit in order to operate a church in the C2 zone. Specific findings for the special use permit are included in the Exhibit A of Exhibit One, which is the resolution for the special use permit. Next slide. With that, I wanted to point out there is a removal of condition number eight, which is under planning under use restrictions regarding the no transfer of the special use permit to be allowed to another church in case the premises are vacated by Anthem Church during a seven-year period associated with this use. Because the special use permit actually runs with the land, the city does not have the ability to preclude another assembly use to come in and assume the special use permit. So therefore, this condition is being removed. And with that, the staff's recommendation is to grant special use permit for church consisting of the assembly area, the office, classrooms, storage area, and an existing commercial center at 760 Sycamore Avenue. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is here. It's present. Pastor Chase is participant in the Zoom meeting tonight, but they do not have a formal presentation. Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much, Ms. Chow. Since we don't have a applicant presentation, we'll move on to questions of staff or the applicant by the commission. Commissioner Kramer, any questions of staff?
None at this time. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Hastings?
I have no questions.
Okay. Commissioner Grimm? You have to unmute, Charlie.
Sorry, no questions.
Okay. Commissioner Garretson?
No questions.
All right. And Commissioner Looney?
No questions or comments.
Okay. And Commissioner Aguilar? John, you're muted on my screen.
No questions.
All right. Thank you very much. I had one, one comment for, is it Pastor Chase?
Correct. Just one concern concerning the storage area. And that's a fairly large portion of the building. And I'm, I'm fine with the church use. I just need to know what your thoughts are about the storage area.
Yeah, currently, the, the owner will be in that space. We, we have labeled it as storage because we would have to come back and build that out and we'd have to resubmit for an amendment as, as the labeled. But that's, we've made an agreement with the landlord that they can continue to operate in that space as they have.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. That concludes Commissioners' questions of staff and the applicant. I will then open the public hearing. And Mr. Conley, do we have any, any speakers on this item?
So for the attendees' purposes, if anyone is interested in speaking, they would need to click the raised hand button at the bottom of their screen. But I do not see any hands raised at this point, Mr. Chairman.
All right. So then we will go ahead and close the public hearing and open it up to Commissioner Discussion. Any, any, any comments by the commissioners? Ms., Commissioner Kramer?
If no one has any comments or, or anything, then I would move to adopt Resolution 2010 next in line, granting the special use permit for the church consisting of a sanctuary, office, classrooms, and a storage area in the existing commercial center at 760 Sycamore Avenue.
Very good. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, John Looney.
Is that Commissioner Aguilar?
That was Commissioner Looney.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right. So we have a motion to approve the special use permit and it's been seconded. Shall we cast our votes? Mr. Conley, would you call the roll, please?
I think we have a question from Mr. Grimm, Commissioner.
But it's not that important. We've already moved down the path, so let's just go ahead and vote. That's fine.
Okay. Sorry, missed your hand. So. Mr. Conley, would you call the roll, please?
Absolutely. Chairman Rossler.
Yes.
Vice Chair Kramer.
Yes.
Chairman, Commissioner Hastings.
Yes.
Commissioner Grimm.
Yes.
Commissioner Looney.
Yes.
Commissioner Garretson.
Yes.
Commissioner Aguilera.
Yeah.
That's unanimous.
Very good. Motion's been approved unanimously. The next item on our agenda is a discussion item. This is an early design review application. It is not a public hearing, but we will take public testimony. So if you're listening or watching to, to testify on this, this item, make sure you raise your hand so Mr. Conley can, can call on you. I believe Mr. Winters has the staff report and we'll go to him now.
Just give me one moment here to put the presentation up. Chris, make sure you unmute.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and start here. This is an early design review item. It's for Alliance North Santa Fe Project, P 20-0170. Next slide, please. And I wanted to suggest as well, if, as this is a discussion item and the commission will discuss the project with the applicant. After my presentation, if there's any slides that you'd like to note the slide number of, then we can go back to those if you let us know the slide number. Purpose of the EDR is to provide an opportunity for the Planning Commission to review the initial proposal and provide preliminary advisory comments to the project applicant. Proposal has not been routed or fully reviewed by all city staff. Is reviewed only in terms of basic zoning compliance. The applicant will answer specific questions about the project design and the thought process behind the initial proposal. No formal vote or action is required necessary for an EDR item. Next slide. Project scope is a preliminary proposal to develop 60 apartment units inclusive of five affordable units as proposed currently on a 1.2 acre site. Property is located on the east side of North Santa Fe Avenue, west of Manor Drive, 600 feet north of Bouvier Drive. Subject site is currently vacant. Next slide, please. This slide shows an aerial image of the project location. The site is a through lot located between North Santa Fe Avenue and Manor Drive. It's a single parcel that is currently vacant. And this image was taken of foundation of a home that has been removed as visible southeast corner of the lot. Thank you. Next slide. This slide shows the surrounding land uses in the local vicinity there. To the northwest is an apartment property, two stories. There's a mobile home park to the west, farther. To the south are commercial uses that surround the intersection of North Santa Fe Avenue and Bouvier Drive. To the east are single-family homes and to the north, as well as a restaurant on the adjacent property to the north. Slide. And our plan designation for the property is mixed use, MU. This provides for a variety of compatible land uses, including single-family residential, multifamily, retail, office uses, and combination of those various uses as possible. Surrounding properties are designated, as shown on the slide, medium density residential to the east and to the north, high density to the northwest, mixed use surrounding the project site and to the west, and neighborhood commercial to the south near the intersection with Bouvier. Slide, please. The corresponding zoning is mixed use 40, which allows maximum of 40 dwelling units per acre. And this zoning allows for a broad variety of commercial and residential land uses. Existing development consists of the single-family residential to the north and the east, as well as the commercial to the south that I mentioned. There's vacant property across the street where there's also a, currently a proposal, I believe, for a 19-unit, four-story, multifamily project. Summarize the proposed project. It would require a site development plan application to the city, environmental review, and landscape preview. It would consist of 60 apartment units and one four-story building, three residential floors above a ground floor parking garage. Units consist of six studios, 36 one-bedroom units, and 18 two-bedroom units. Proposed density at 47.6 dwelling units per acre. The proposed height is 56 feet. The existing zoning allows for a 60-foot maximum height, and it's in a contemporary architectural style. Next slide. Slide nine shows the site plan and driveway access near the northwest corner of the property. There are six parking spaces at the site frontage by North Santa Fe Avenue. Then a drive entrance that proceeds east through the first-floor garage area and exits to the site frontage on Manor Drive, where there are an additional 24 open parking spaces. Project proposes 81 total parking spaces. As noted at the end of the staff report, state law allows for a project that includes affordable housing to provide two parking spaces for two-bedroom units, one parking space for one studio and one-bedroom units. And based on that provision, the project requires 78 parking spaces. Eighty-one has been provided under the proposed plan. Next slide, please. I won't spend a lot of time on the elevations and floor plans, but just to run through them. And this shows the west elevation at the top of the slide, which would be facing North Santa Fe Avenue. The south elevation, which would be, as viewed, I guess, approaching the property from Bouvier Drive area. Next slide. East elevation, which would be facing Manor Drive on the north, on the top of the slide. And the north elevation at the bottom of the slide, which would face the small restaurant property to the north. Next slide. This slide shows perspective views of all elevations with landscaping added. Next slide, please. This is the first floor plan, which includes the garage parking areas, an amenity room, a bicycle, a storage room, a lobby area for the complex, as well as access to stairways and an elevator. Slide, please. Slide 14 shows a second-floor layout with the central courtyard amenity. The third and fourth floors are similar, except with an open view to the courtyard below. Each residential floor has 20 units. And an enlarged, an enlarged example of Unit B1 is to the right of the slide. Next slide, please. Slide 15 shows conceptual perspective views of the building exterior and interior courtyard, open space areas that include seating, walkways, a tot lot, a dog run, barbecue islands, and landscape areas. Next slide. This slide shows the overall building location on the property, parking areas and landscaping, as well as the interior courtyard. At the bottom of the slide is a, is a closer view of that courtyard area in the interior. Next slide. That concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions. I believe that we have online Mr. Jim McMenamin and Greg Lamarcos with Alliance Development and also Stephen Dalton, I believe, as the project architect. Thank you.
Does the applicant have a, a presentation for us or are they just available for questions?
Available for questions.
All right, very good. Commissioners, so let's, we'll do two, we'll do this in two phases. We'll go through and ask you if you have any questions of staff or the applicant about the project. And then we'll go through and discuss each one of the, each one of the application items, the architecture, the floor plans, parking, traffic circulation, and, and get your comments on, on those. So Commissioner Kramer, any questions of staff or the applicant?
Yes, question of staffs, please. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Winters, on, let's see, item number one. Can you define what a concession is when you say that a proposed project would qualify for maximum, maximum of one concession? What's a concession?
Under the city's Affordable Units and Density Bonus Codes and based on state law, when a unit, a project provides a certain number or percentage of affordable units, state law allows for them to have concessions, which are generally a relief of a particular development standard as requested by the applicant. And usually it's one or two concessions based on the percentage of affordable. And usually, it's one or two concessions based on the percentage of affordable low-income household units that are provided. It could be a relief of the applicant's choosing. It's up to the planning commission's review to accept.
Okay. So in this case, they're asking for where the, what is it? The proposed density, that's, that's one of the concessions they're asking for? Is, because it's, it's supposed to be 40 dwellings per acre, and it's currently 47.6? Is that considered one of the concessions?
The, it is not. The density is basically the bonus that's provided under the ordinance. The concession that the applicant is requesting in addition to that, which is also provided by that code, would be a, to not require a 32-foot drive aisle in the enclosed garage parking area.
Okay. Why is that? Why are they asking for a reduction? Doesn't it make it harder for cars to get through?
Generally, the city code requires 24-foot drive aisles, but we do have a requirement for an enclosed space where there's columns and walls that a 32-foot drive aisle be provided for more accessibility for vehicles and so on. That might tie in with fire department access. I'm not sure. That's something we'd have to follow up on.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have right now, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Commissioner Hastings, any questions of staff or the applicant?
Yes, I do. One is that I'm also interested in that 24-foot, 32-foot thing. I'd be interested in getting that answer from staff on that. The other is a question for the applicant on the, how they came up with the distribution of types of apartments. There are often not studio apartments in, in the apartment buildings that I've seen around here, so that's interesting. And having just one and two-bedroom and no three, what was the reasoning behind that?
Mr. McMenamin?
McMenamin, yes, hi. Hello, I'm, yes, I'm Jim McMenamin with Alliance Development, and thanks for the opportunity to present this to you this evening. And our architect, Steve Dalton, is on the line here, and I'm going to let him answer that, but I'll be available to answer any other questions. But I'd like Steve to take that question, if you will, please, Steve, and also comment on the, on the concession.
Sure. The concession, or the apartment mix is driven by where we think the market, a market segment that we hope to serve. We think the studio apartment provides an affordable rent and housing option for singles and couples. And so that's why we included studios in the, in the mix. And we didn't go to three-bedrooms because we felt like that was a large, a large apartment that wasn't quite the market that we were trying to serve. On the concession question, the municipal code's a little bit vague about what a 32-foot, we've been saying it's the drive aisle, but I think in the code, it's not specifically labeled a drive aisle. The distance, the spanning distance between concrete columns, it's really, that's a long span for a concrete podium. And a more typical span distance is something like 26, 27, 28 feet, which is typically what three cars, three-car base is. So we are providing a 24-foot drive aisle, which is plenty of space to turn and maneuver into a parking space. It is the drive aisle width, which is allowed throughout the city on any other parking lot. Regarding the fire department, the fire department will not drive their trucks under the building. They will always fight a fire or access the building from outside the perimeter of the building. So it's not a question about whether fire trucks can enter into the building or not.
I also, I'm sorry.
We also had a PowerPoint presentation to show tonight, and I don't know if we've missed that opportunity now, but Chris, I think we emailed it to you earlier, or I have it available if I can screen share my, from my computer.
Don't add that, sorry.
Mr. Conley, can we, can the applicant share his screen and see their presentation?
Just give me one minute here. I need to give them that authority. All right, Mr. Dalton, you should have a share option here shortly.
Okay, are you seeing a PowerPoint?
Yes. Go ahead.
Okay, let me start. So I'll let Jim McMenamin start, but Alliance Development, this is a little bit of background on the client. Jim, do you want to address this?
Sure. Greg Lamarcus, who's also on the meeting here, and I are Alliance Development Services, and Greg is the principal of Alliance Development Services, and I am his forward planning and entitlement representative. And Alliance is active with other communities of mixed uses throughout San Diego, both multifamily as well as mixed-use commercial and hotel property in San Diego. So these are representative images of some of the projects that Alliance has built or is in the process of completing.
And Steve Dalton, or Stephen Dalton Architects, this is a selection of projects that we have completed throughout San Diego County, but we included them here because they represent or contain similar elements to the architecture that we're going to show you later in the slideshow. Particularly is framed openings around glass, bolder colors in recessed areas, textured or corrugated metal panels for some texture and visual pattern, corner balconies, guardrail types here, and stucco planks. You might be familiar with our work on South Santa Fe in the redevelopment zone. This building is a 42-unit project, and we are, the building permit has been, if not issued, it's permit-ready, and the client intends to break ground in September on this project, and this will be a similar-scale project, four stories over a concrete podium. I'll breeze through the site. I did want to point out that we have a lot of green space on our site, but significantly, our building is pushed forward towards North Santa Fe. In this mixed-use zone, we feel like that starts to repair or complete, mostly repair or begin kind of the street wall that a major street like Santa Fe is envisioned to have. But it also does, it sets us back significantly from the single-family properties that are to our east. And so we have upwards of about 67 feet from the rear property line from Manor Drive before we get to our building. Within, you'll see this on the landscape plans, but we do have kind of a playground tot lot area here, common area patios and barbecues here, a clubroom off of this space. You can see that here, tot lots, landscaped outdoor space patios. And then at the second level, on the top of the podium, we have this landscape area as well. This courtyard is allowing light and ventilation to come into the units, and it's also providing a common space amenity and barbecues, fire pits, and seating areas. You've seen, this is roughly the floor plan. We wanted to show you a few perspective views from around the project. This is from the northwest. You're seeing kind of that banded architectural element around glass and windows, recessed balconies with pops of color in the recessed elements, and corners accented with vertical siding and cornered balconies. This is a view of the upper courtyard. I think this was in your staff report, so I'll kind of breeze through it, but showing that we can get some trees and some landscape up there. The downstairs patio space, this is the amenity room just beyond and through these doors here and over here. And then again on the courtyard space up above. So we're excited about this project. We look forward to hearing your input, and I'll return the screen back over to staff.
Good. Thank you. All right. Let's go back and touch base with Commissioner Kramer and Commissioner Hastings again. Now that they've seen the applicant's presentation, any additional questions or comments, or questions right now?
Nothing from me. Thank you.
Commissioner Hastings?
I was just following up on the, thank you for the explanation on the parking, underground parking. On the, I'm losing it. The affordable, affordable housing. Which, which of the units were you intending? The smaller ones or, or some of each?
Yes. We are proposing a balanced mix of the affordable units. And so we will set aside one studio unit, three one-bedroom units, and one two-bedroom unit is affordable. That matches about the proportion that ones and twos and studios are in the overall project.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Grimm, any comments or questions, or questions for the applicant or staff?
Yes, I did. I had a question very similar to Commissioner Hastings. The project is a fairly dense project, and that's primarily because of, you know, obviously because of the, it's a single building, and then you have a large number of small units. And so my comment was also about the number of units and the way their classification. You have 60 units, 42 of those are either studio or one-bedroom. I was just wondering if you had, and I've always thought, and you know, times change and maybe different, but I've always thought that, that there's more of a need for two and three-bedroom family units than there are for studios and, and single bedroom. But I was just wondering if you, if you consulted Sandag, or is there, there are figures that show that there is a need for this, this kind of mix of units?
I'll defer to the ownership on that question regarding the marketing.
To try to respond to your question, we have consulted with third-party market information to come up with this mix, and we believe it best caters to the market of our prospective renters. The three-bedroom units typically aren't as much in demand as the one- and two-bedroom units, just simply put. We rely on third-party marketing input to give us the best idea of our renter profile.
And that would be a third-party information consultant or?
Property management and marketing consultants, yes.
Great.
Who have experience in these matters throughout, you know, both Vista and other areas of San Diego County, throughout San Diego County.
Thank you. Commissioner Garretson, any questions of the applicant or staff?
Yes, one question concerning access from Manor Drive. I'm just wondering, since this is a four-story building, you would have to have maybe a longer fire truck coming in there, and I'm just wondering if there's enough room to get in and turn from Manor Drive? Because it looks like those parking spots are pretty close.
Right. I believe the fire access lane or access road is 24 feet is the requirement, and we meet that requirement from Manor Lane and within our project. That, I'll point out, maybe this was obvious, that that is a fire access only back there, that the cars or the tenants won't be exiting that direction. They'll be going out to the north Santa Fe.
But there's enough room, once the fire truck gets inside your property, to be able to turn and get to the other, not under the building, but to the other side in the back?
Correct.
And to be able to turn, since they can't go under?
Right. The fire truck, they may likely not pull the truck all the way up to the northern edge of our building. They will likely pull the truck straight in and leave it there, and then with a ladder access, access the roof of our building, or with a 200-foot hose, pull hoses around the perimeter of our building.
Okay.
They, they're not, they're not intended to pull into our building and turn around on our site and back out, or then pull them.
Fire department will, will have a look at this before it's approved, right?
Right.
All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Looney, any questions of staff or the applicant?
Yes, one for staff and one for the applicant. Chris, on the, the last three to four years, I know we've looked at two or three other projects in this area, and how do the heights of those buildings compare to what has been proposed here? Do you recall those?
John might comment quickly on the Perseid project, but I know that one on your main street was at 60-feet height.
Yes, if the Perseid project that came before the commission that's under construction right now, I believe their maximum height is around 50 feet. It was a three-story product. It was between 45 and 50 feet, if I remember, at their highest point, Commissioner. As far as the pre-applications or the EDRs that we saw on these particular properties on the east side of North Santa Fe, north of Bouvier, we have seen a couple proposals over there. Most have been in the range of 50 to 60 feet, based on the zoning that's permitted.
Okay. And then coming back to the fire access, the right-of-way, the city right-of-way for Manor Drive is 20 feet? And I see where, Steve, you've taken some property off that rear line to give you an additional four feet for that street widening. What happens to the fire accessibility on the restaurant property to the north, where we've got roughly 30 feet of length of street between the street improvements you're proposing, Steve, on the back of the property, to, what was it, Portia or Portia Avenue? But that's only 20 feet wide, so will the city accommodate a 24-foot wide drive as a basement on the restaurant property, or how might that work?
He would be relying on the existing improvements there, Mr. Chairman, and the fire department would be looking at what's in place today. If the fire access there is not adequate, there's a possibility of conditioning some additional widening there if adequate right-of-way is available, but that would be something that the department would review as part of the formal application.
Okay. That's all the questions I have. Thank you for the answers.
Commissioner Aggarwal, any, any questions of staff or the applicant?
Yes, I have a question, a couple of questions for staff. Has the fire department reviewed this at all?
Not yet.
Are they, are they there to review this?
There, there's been no formal review of the application from any of the city's departments at this point.
Okay. Well, because I see this as a, as a problem with the fire department. Would there be any traffic improvements required of the applicant?
That would be determined as part of the formal review. They would, at minimum, be required to widen North Santa Fe along that property frontage. Any additional traffic improvements off-site could be triggered by CEQA or a traffic study, but it's undetermined at this point.
I think, I think they're going to be in for a traffic light most likely at Angeles, would be my guess, but I guess CEQA could determine that. So if they widen North Santa Fe where they're at, would that allow for parking, on, on street parking?
Normally, on-street parking is Normally, on-street parking is permitted where the width is available. So that would be evaluated and determined as part of the entitlement as well. That's a, another issue that would come back to the commission.
Project does include a 25-foot dedication of frontage and sidewalk and parkway improvements that are shown on the conceptual plans.
25 foot?
25-foot dedication, 10-foot parkway, which would be a landscaping sidewalk area, curb gutter sidewalk improvements.
And then can somebody explain to me how this parking works? I'm looking at six studio units, one-bedroom, 36 one-bedroom units and 18 two-bedroom units. In my estimation, that's probably well over 100 cars. So how is this parking, this, I guess it's section 65915, P1B? Is this an exception to, or different, obviously it's different from our city requirements, right?
Correct. Yes, they, they are afforded lower parking standards under state law if they meet the density bonus requirements.
So, but aren't they asking for two different exceptions here?
No, the parking is not counted as a concession under state law. It's automatic and they are granted one additional concession.
That's all my questions for now, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I have several questions for the, for the applicant and the ownership. Are they going to be onsite managers?
Yes, this is Jim. The answer is yes.
Okay. And then something, if you go back with staff and review what the commission has done in the past on other multifamily projects, we've asked for a parking management plan and make sure that people are parking in the right location. And, and so we will want to see how you're going to manage your, your parking. It has been a condition of approval in the past, but it would be helpful if you would start off with a proposal for us. The other thing I'd, I'd like to see, the architect put a, given us, give us an exhibit with a turning template on there, so we can see a car would into one of the parking spaces by a post that are only 24 feet wide. So just a comment there. How does the trash work? Each floor has their own trash room, and then the, there's a big trash enclosure on the, on the parking level. Review this with EDCO to make sure their trash trucks can get in and out. How's, how's that going to?
Yes, we're going to coordinate with EDCO on that. Those are trash chutes that will drop directly down into the trash enclosure. EDCO will take the cans out from under the garage and empty them within their truck.
Okay. And then?
If I might just address one other comment, we did conduct a pre-application here, a meeting with the city staff. And as part of that pre-application meeting, the fire department did review the plans. And so there's been some concern expressed already about fire access and location. The fire department has seen these plans in their current state.
Okay. Well, they'll get a more detailed review when you, when you submit your, your formal Also, on each floor, there are three storage areas. Are those for the tenants? And will they have a space inside the storage area? Or is that storage for maintenance?
There's storage for each unit. A combination of, partially on each floor, there is storage units for the units. There are storage units over cars in the garage, hanging over the hoods. And a limited number of those storage units on the, on each floor will be dedicated to the building itself or some low voltage wiring and, and stuff like that. But, well, that's only one per, or two per floor.
Okay. I, I just had a, a thought about your, your plaza area, and you have two barbecue islands out there. I know my neighbors put up with my burn offerings quite a bit. So have you ever thought about smoke and fumes and, and smells coming out of the barbecue and enclosed courtyard area?
Yeah, that's a good point. We haven't really thought about what's going to happen with the smoke, other than it is, that courtyard space is 30 feet or more in width. So there will be, you know, air movement and, and ability to exhaust it away. But maintaining that privacy between the private units and that common space is, is one of the important aspects of our landscape design, and that's something that we'll have to address.
Okay, very good. And then the HVAC units, are they going to go on the roof or in the open space?
They'll be on the roof.
Okay. Screened by, screened by parapets up, up on the top?
Roof parapets, correct.
Okay, all right. Okay, that, that concludes my questions. Thank you very much for your, your presentation. Commissioners, if there are no other questions, we will move on to comments, and we break it down into each one of the design elements. Comments on the, on the site design? Commissioner Kramer, any comments on the site design?
No, other than I like it. I like what they've done. I like that the apartments are closer to the front and what they're proposing as far as design will look similar to the ones on the artist loft on the other, on the other side of Vista Village Drive. So I thought it was quite nice.
All right. Commissioner Hastings, any, any comments on the site design?
One thing I did notice is that not all of the apartments have access or availability to the open airspace. And I know that they're on the outside, but some of the outside apartments also have access and visibility to the courtyard space. So is this going to be a desirability thing when renting the apartments out? Is it, do you see that as a concern?
The courtyard on the second floor is, is accessible to all, all tenants? If that was the question.
I guess that's my question, except that they can't see it, right? The ones on the outside, yeah.
You know, every, every apartment varies and some get a northern exposure, some get a southern exposure. A limited number get an internal exposure into the courtyard space.
Yeah, okay. That's just my comment. That's it, thanks.
Commissioner Grimm, comments on the, on the site design?
Yeah, I'd just like to real quickly go back to the parking, too. I, I am concerned that, especially since you have that large number of, of smaller units, that if you project that out and figure that, I believe both, let's see, I believe both these, these studios and the one-bedroom are parked less than two per unit. It's the one I'm assuming, when I'm looking at Chris, but I assume it's 1.2 or something like that for a, for a one-bedroom. Anyway, it, it doesn't matter. My point is that if you have two adult drivers living in the units, even you could, which you could do even in a studio, your likelihood of at least, you know, I don't know, quarter, half of those units having two drivers, two cars, where is that, where is that extra parking going to end up? And probably end up in the single-family neighborhood. So that's kind of my concern. I'd like to see more of the two-bedroom units.
Okay, that, that kind of goes to floor plans and, and parking, but no problems with the site layout?
I'm sorry, I don't have my list in front of me, so I didn't know when we were getting to that. But no, that's, sorry for jumping ahead, but that's my, my comment.
Right, very good. Commissioner, Commissioner Garretson, any comments on the site design?
Yeah, I like the fact, like Commissioner Hastings mentioned, of having the building toward the front and not right on top of those single-family homes. And will there be access, walking access from Manor over to the site?
Yes, yes, there will.
So therefore, people could park, and I know I'm getting ahead here a little bit, but people could park in the single-family residence and walk to the units, walk to the facility. Okay, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Looney, comments on the site design?
Sure. So as what's been listed or mentioned before, movement of building towards the street, smart move, you've got good spaces in the rear yard, you've got a good, almost 30 feet up that south property line, from the property line to the building, a good landscape buffer there. You're using a variety of materials for your parking, so we've got some texture. I'm assuming that that's some type of permeable paver of some sort. But I think the site plan works really well. It's refreshing, so, thank you.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Agnewar, comments on the, on the site design?
You know, it's a, it's a very nice-looking project. Think they've done a very good job. I do like the fact that it's closer to the street than to the homes. But that's really my concern with this, is a four-story project next to single-family one-story homes. All those homes are one stories, they're built probably in the 70s or 60s. I believe there's one two-story house on Manor, possibly. But the apartments across the street are only two-story, and Perseus is only a three-story. And people already are complaining about the fact that the three-story building is going up and it's huge, you know, and it's close to the street. This has the same setback, I believe, as Perseus. So I'm concerned about the height. As far as the site plan, I think it's well laid out, but I do still have concerns about fire access. That's all my concerns.
Okay, very good. Mr. Conley, I forgot to ask if there were any of the participants that had raised their hand and wanted to speak on the, on the project?
We do have one request from Mr. Kaiser, Chairman.
All right. Mr. Kaiser, would you like to give us your comments now? And I apologize for skipping over you.
No, no worries. I have several comments. You want me to just limit it to the site design at this point or just in general?
And you get three minutes right now to provide your comments, so.
Okay. So, I, I like, you know, the architect as being something new to an area that's old and tired in that area. But at the same time, it's got to fit in, and this is not going to fit in. It's kind of like City Hall. It's a beautiful building, but it just doesn't fit in, right? And this, this architect that we've seen so far just doesn't fit in with that area that's been alluded to already. It's sounding like the city doesn't have an option with the parking requirements, and that's going to be a disaster. Anytime we look at apartments around this area, whether it be on Bobier or Cade Jules, people park on the streets and they leave their mess all over, and that's what's going to happen here. There's going to be 120, 130 cars assigned or there. Does the city or the apartment manager have the ability to control the number of cars that they allow on the renters? I suspect the answer is no. You know, if they have somebody there, they're going to have as many cars as that, as, as people live there. The, the height was already mentioned, nothing in the area is that high. Not necessarily bad, but that means it's more important that the architecture of the, of the building fit in nicely with what's around it. And then I'm still not clear is what is the one concession that they're asking for or the city is, is granting? And that's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. The concession, as I understand it, is the width between the, the supporting post and the garage. The code calls for 32 feet, and they're requesting 24 feet. That's why we asked for the turning template to make sure, to see a demonstration of how cars would pull in and pull out with those posts only at 24 feet. So, all right. I believe we were, did we finish with site design? We did. And I, my only comments on the site design are that I, I think it's well laid out and I like building being moved forward, more space between the building and the single-family homes. So then, let's move on to architecture and floor plans. Commissioner Kramer, any comments on the architecture or floor plans?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, I have no comments at this time.
Okay. Commissioner Hastings?
Not at the moment, no questions.
Okay. Commissioner Grimm?
Just the comment that I like, the architecture.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Garretson?
I like the architecture and the way it's laid out.
Okay. Commissioner Looney?
Floor plans work really well. There's no wiggle room to put in another bedroom in any of the units. They all have their washer and dryer set up, the bathrooms are good size, bedrooms work. As far as the architecture, one of the positive things, Steve, that you've done on this is each elevation has architecture to it. There's not really a back to the house or back to the building. The back has as much interest almost as the front of the building, and the sides have the same thing. You've focused on light, you've focused on air, you've got some, just a very creative roofline and wall planes. I really think it works really well.
Yeah.
Yes, so many of your other projects, it looks great.
Okay. Commissioner Agnewar, any comments on the, on the architecture or floor plans? Is he still with us, John? You're muted, John.
Sorry. Looks like we lost Commissioner Aguilera.
Okay. All right. I, I agree with Commissioner Looney. I was impressed when I opened the plans up and looked at the, the architecture of the, the buildings. No backside, changes in the roof elevation, change in the material, changes in fenestration. I, I think for initial application, I was, I was impressed. So congratulations, and we'll be looking forward to, to the formal submittal. So then let's move on. Do we have any other comments on parking or traffic? I think we've kind of beat that one to death in our, our review. Anybody have additional comments? So for the applicant, that parking management plan is going to be, is going to be key for us. If you look at the other two affordable projects that have been built on, on Santa Fe that have gotten parking concessions, I believe we haven't found a parking problem with them yet. But, but being able for the manager to tell the tenant, you get one space and you get one car if you're going to, if you're going to rent in this, in this facility. So that's, that's kind of what we've seen in the past and kind of what we'll be looking for in the future. Any comments on the landscaping or amenities from the commissioners? Commissioner Kramer?
Yes, the idea of a bike room, fabulous. I don't think I've seen that before, and it's great incentive and looks like it's a secured area. So I was real happy with that, and I was pleased with the amount of landscape for this. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to let you know, Commissioner Aguilera is back. He just must have dropped off for a moment.
Okay. Commissioner Agnewar, we've just finished with floor plans, no, we did, covered, got to you on floor plans and elevation. got to you on floor plans and elevations. We were talking about parking and traffic circulation. Did you have, I think we've pretty well discussed that, but did you have any other questions or, or comments on, on that?
No, my, I made comments earlier. The parking, I think the project's underparked by a lot. And the 24-foot in-and-out is, well, I have a question. Is that the, that's the only in-and-out, right, the North Santa Fe?
There's emergency access onto the alley, but.
I'm talking about the main in, in-and-out of the project, so.
In-and-out is.
The 24 feet, yeah, the 24 feet seems very narrow for that, that size of a project. So that's my comment. I've already made my comments on the parking. It's, it's just too underparked. I think all these cars are going to end up on Manor Drive.
All right. So landscaping amenities, Commissioner Kramer had comments. Anyone else have comments on landscaping or amenities? Commissioner Garrettson?
Yeah, I, I like what they've done there, where they've kind of spread out, you know, who they're trying to accommodate, whether it be top lots for the kids, or the bike for the visibly fit, or those that just want to hang around. I, I like what they've done with the, with the amenities and what they've done with the.
Very good. Commissioner Hastings?
I like the permeable, permeable paving, front and back, where the exposed parking was. I thought that was a nice touch.
All right. If there are no further comments, for the applicant and the architect, any questions of us to, based on the comments that you've heard this evening? Do you have any, any additional comments? You understand what the commission's concerns are?
Nope, no comments from me. Thank you for your comments. I think I understand where you guys are coming from.
Likewise. Thanks very much for the feedback, and we'll take this under consideration, and we appreciate your time.
And I would also just like to thank everybody for their time on this as well.
Okay, very good. This is a discussion item. There is no, no vote, so that will conclude our discussion on the apartment project. And the next item on our agenda is comments from the commissioners. Any comments or, or questions of staff from the commissioners of staff? All right, then we'll move to Mr. Conley's report.
So I've got a couple things to report here this evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. One is we won't have a meeting on September 1st. Our next meeting will be on September 15th. It looks like we'll have at least one or two agenda items at night, but you'll hopefully enjoy a nice little break. With respect to projects that are active, the Sun Road project that came before the Council on Appeal, as you know, was approved. They are actively under construction. I did get some questions from the community about the timing of the grading permit. Just for the commissioners' information, the applicant decided to submit building and grading plans well ahead of their entitlement hearings for that project in an effort to try to be construction-ready. That was done at their own risk. We do allow for that, but it allows them to get their plan check done before the entitlement hearings happen. In the event they're approved, they can move forward much more quickly, and they opted to do that. So that's something that is permissible at an applicant's risk. The council agenda that's coming up next Tuesday night has a couple of items that may be of interest to some commissioners. There is a zone change request at the corner of Eucalyptus and Civic Center, which is catty-corner to the City Hall Building, a vacant corner. There's two separate zoning designations there. One is mixed-use, one is Civic Center Downtown Specific Plan. The zoning standards are different, so because the site encompasses two zoning designations, the applicant's asking for the least restrictive zoning, which would be the Civic Center Downtown Specific Plan zoning. They're proposing a mixed-use project there, which would be commercial ground floor and three stories of residential, which would encompass the three properties. So it'll be presented to the council for discussion, and they're just going to provide input to the applicant. I'll let you know if it moves forward formally, but that will be a discussion item. We're also going to discuss the Perseus Santa Fe sign again. For the edification of the commission, that's Councilman Green's request, just to discuss this one final time before we install a new gateway arch signed down by Civic Center Drive. So if anybody wants to take part in that exciting discussion, please join us Tuesday night. And then the last item was the Terrace project, which Mr. Dalton mentioned. They are going to be issued a grading permit here shortly, and so you should see some activity at the corner of Santa Fe and Terrace for the construction of that project starting in September. And that's all I have, unless the commissioners have any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Conley? All right, very good. Well, thank you all very much. This, it, it is finally good to see you all again, and, and we will stand adjourn until September 15th. See you guys then.
Thank you.